All right, I've got 5 o'clock, November the 17th. I'd like to ask Brother Coleman for a word of prayer.
Let's bow our heads. Father God, we just want to thank you for this night, Lord. We thank you for each and everyone that pressed out with officials tonight, Lord, and our community and the people around us. We ask that you just touch this meeting, that we get an understanding and be able to help the community. And, Lord, we just give you the praise and honor in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. See, we have some city employees today. Thank you all for coming. Do y'all have anything to bring? Okay. We've got the new elected mayor of Centertown. He's just coming by to see how things was conducted around here. We've got Meredith Skaggs. I always want to call her Eskers, but it's Meredith Skaggs. And appreciate her no ends. Strattens, do y'all have anything to bring forward tonight?
We like the lights. The lights. Are those new?
That is to the thanks of all the council members here as well, so it's really exciting. So, thank you all.
The old ones, I think, are older than me.
Right. Before you have the minutes of the last meeting, I'll give you a minute to look over that. I'll ask for a motion to accept the minutes as read.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as read.
I have a first, a second. Second by Coleman. All in favor say aye. Pose like aye. Motion carries. City Attorney Ward, do you have anything to bring to the table this afternoon?
Do you want me to update you what I know on this street?
Yes. That was in my discussion list anyway, so bring it out.
So, you all might remember back before George resigned, there had been a request by Mr. Decker to close about three areas of streets that had never really been opened up and haven't been used in years on the intersection of Thomas and Phillips Street, being a portion of...
The intersection of what?
It's affecting his property, which is at the intersection of Thomas and Phillips Street, but it's talking about the old alleyway that is no longer in use, a portion of Zimmerman Street, which was platted but never actually opened, and then a portion of Phillips Street, which was discontinued and never really used over the years. George and I had talked about this, and the concern that came up is that there is a corner lot up here directly north of Mr. Decker owned by DKJ Investments. And I'm not sure who that is. I thought George maybe had had a contact or knew of someone. Mr. Decker may...
From what we have in our previous minutes, we did discuss this and we did vote on this, correct?
We do.
And basically, there was one lady that wasn't...
I think that was...
The D and K?
Yeah. I think she was affiliated with that company.
Okay.
Yeah. And I think that was the issue. She wasn't fully on board, and I think George was going to try, from what I can remember, I talked to Lisa about this, he was going to try and speak with her, and of course, things went down, and then he resigned, and is no longer here. So, I don't know what happened.
All right. Now, then, that property that this company owns interferes with all of this, or is setting where?
Well, it's setting right here north of Mr. Decker's property, and even though none of these streets were ever opened, and it's not like they're actively being used, her property is kind of situated in such a way that it would probably be best to go ahead and obtain her consent as well, if you look at it.
Are we going to give it to them, or they own it?
Well, we voted on, in the previous meeting is what I'm made aware of, as long as everybody was in agreement that we would just forfeit ours over to them, and that was in the agreement in the minutes.
Forfeit it to which owner?
To this...
Mr. Decker owns everything on every side except for Zimmerman Street. There's 25 feet there that would likely go with Mr. Callaway's property, but he owns everything on either side of Phillips and that alleyway with the exception of DKJ Investments, which after there was some hiccup there, I believe he obtained a second survey which cut off instead of going all the way down.
How much property is in question?
I don't know. The road, all we're talking about is actually just roadway that were platted that are not actually approved. My understanding was the agreement and the approval that the council had previously done, it was with the understanding that everybody involved was consenting.
All parties was okay with that. That was the biggest concern, so...
Does that one party still have an exit in their thing?
Yeah. I mean, they have plenty of frontage right there on Ellis Avenue and the rest of Phillips Street here, which goes past their property. I just, I think, I just remember there being that discussion. Lisa and I were talking this morning, and we don't really know what happened to it because George left office, and he was kind of the one who was pointing on that, so...
So, that's just an update. I really think that if someone purchases the city and they want property, that they can purchase it. I really do. This business of us giving away property is what I consider a good course of action.
It's not so much giving away property. It is basically abandoning, formally abandoning, city streets and rights away that were never actually formally opened or haven't been and haven't been in use in several years. And the way that Kentucky law reads is when you do abandon those, because the city was platted in this area and sold off by plats with those streets shown on the plats, that when they're abandoned, then the ownership goes in the middle to the owners on each side. So, that's the operation of law. But you are correct in that when we are requested to close certain streets and rights away, there are costs involved, such as the preparation and publication of the ordinance, as well as recording it with the county clerk. So, there are some expenses to the city.
Well, Lisa, Mr. Decker, the one that took that other piece of property that we freely gave away, going up toward the old cemetery, there, the other side of, beside what used to be the old locker or me?
This is the area, this is where you're talking about. Yeah, I know. Well, it hasn't been done.
Yeah, it hasn't been done yet.
It was talked about, and you all...
He's got one piece, ain't he?
No.
I mean, he owns all this property.
But it's just, that was what we voted, I was on, me and Station was on, everybody on this council was there on the... It just hasn't got done because of this one tie of the D and K.
And so now, he wants more.
Well, no, 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 no.
He's just wanting to get it done at this point.
That was approved, and from that, George obtained certain consent forms that have to be done to accompany, it has to be done by ordinance. You all voted to do this. Well, there was an issue that came up because I think George was talking to this lady at the time, so no consents or anything were ever signed, so the ordinance was never officially drafted, and then George resigned. So, here we are.
So, what, let's just table this until one of us can make contact, see if we can make contact with this individual, and let's try to get this at a later date, because there's no action that I feel like should be taken until we talk to this.
Yeah, I mean, you see my notes here. That's what I was waiting on, so I could do the ordinance.
Yeah, so let's table this to probably the January meeting, because we'll have a short meeting December, so let's table this until January and see if we can get contact information, if you have anybody as well. And then we'll reach out, and then we'll discuss this in January's meeting, if everybody's in favor with that.
Sounds good.
Okay. Thank you. All right.
The only other thing I have, Beau, is I will mention, I don't see him here today. I told Jeff I'd update him, but the recreational vehicle that was there across from Ellis Park has been removed.
Yes.
And they worked with me on that, and I appreciate it.
Also, somebody had a welfare check on a tent, and Officer York said that it's been taken care of. They was just airing them out as well, so that was taken care of.
They're across from the park, right?
Uh, what, down here on...
They were down here. But the one that, the RV was across the park. It's been taken care of.
Yeah, the park.
Yeah, okay.
All right, thank you.
Well, that's good news. A lot cleaned up there.
So, it's doing pretty good. All right. Before you, you have the financial reports, bank statements, income and statements, and account payable. I'll give everybody a time to review that, and then I'll ask for a motion to accept the bank statements and financial reports.
I make a motion to accept the bank statements and financial reports.
I have a motion. I have a motion, first, second, a tony. All in favor say aye. Pose like aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Station, first. Tony, second. All approved. Okay. Action on business. Um, let's see, let me get there. This is for the length of the service award. Got to find it first.
The back reading.
Okay. All right, this will be the second reading. Station, do you care to read that off?
Okay. City of Hartford, Kentucky, ordinance number 2022-04, and ordinance amending ordinance 2018-09 to the 19, okay, to reflect an increase in the length of service awards for city workers working zero to five years from $75 to $200.
So, this is the second reading. Basically, this is a kind of a longevity thing for appreciation to our employees. With that being said, I'll ask for a motion to accept the ordinance 2022-04.
I make a motion that we accept the ordinance.
A second. I have a first and a second. All in favor say aye. Motion carries. Thank you. All right. Go back to my notes. Okay. So, we accepted the bid to improve the sidewalk right here in front of the police department. We since then went back, and this is going to be a little bit of a project, and Terry, you might help me out with this, but with that being said, here's the outline of this. With that being said, from my blueprints that I have in my office, basically, it states that it's ADA approved now, with the exception on this side.
Right. My understanding, though, is if you modify that, it has to comply with the ADA rules.
Okay.
That was one of the issues that we had with some of the downtown side on the right hand side.
So, basically, what they're telling me is nothing on this side we can do ADA, because it'll just go into the street alley. So, what they decided they could do is build a walkway, kind of like this, coming up where the handicap spot is in front of that area.
And pull it up to the same grade.
Yes.
Okay.
Kind of box in and come in like that. So, there's two different bids on this, and the ramp itself, so basically, there's two different ones. It's a handicap ramp, and that's going to be in front of it, and it'll be basically right there at the handicap spot, parking spot. And that's $2,346.25. Now, that's just for the ramp. The other one is the wall that's going to have to be built in between that area, and I'm going to leave that with you all. It's, it is up to you all on how you all want to go about this. The one thing that I will say, it'll be very more ADA approved, um...
So, I'm just going to interject here, and I know it's two separate line items, but I think actually you have to look at this in the same project, because they go together.
Yes. Yeah. Yeah. So, that's just the two, yeah, should be just one project together.
But I think you're still fine within your limits. The only thing I would maybe recommend, Beau, because you are getting a little bit too cold probably for concrete work anyway this time of year.
Yeah. Almost definitely.
Yeah. Might reach out to our contacts. We've given our engineers plenty of work to work on, just kind of make sure, run it by them, make sure there's nothing that we can't do.
Right.
Maybe make sure it's the most attractive and best use of our funds.
Right.
You think that's...
Yeah, I mean, that's fine. We can, if that's what the council decides they want to do, I'm fine with that, so...
I see what you're saying as a solution, but I'm just wondering, and it may be, if we dig into it...
I just know the biggest thing is the police department side of it needs to be fixed.
Well, this entire area does.
It basically does.
It is awkward and...
If you remember when we did the sidewalk project downtown, one of the reasons, unfortunately, we were unable to do the right-hand side is because of the very high cost of making it conform with ADA because of the elevation grade that when the statewide highway years ago.
And the prices of concrete itself is just going up.
Right. And so, that's what I'm...
This can be tabled. I'm just bringing it...
I think if you can get them to commit to that price in decent weather, we probably have to go for it.
I just want to make sure that what they're proposing is going to be something that...
Yeah, I don't have a problem talking to David Howell about that as well. So, it's at the mercy of the council, however you all...
Is that something we could research grant funding for through grad?
Um, yeah, I mean, there's reconstructioning grants out there that we can look at.
Sometimes the AARP. You're right.
I was going to say, I'd look at something maybe even smaller for that from a community standpoint. When you get into grad funding and everything, by the time they take their engineering fee and the grad fee for a $5,000 project, it's not really worth it.
All right, so what's the final verdict? Do y'all want to table this and see what the engineer, Engineer David Howell says, or I'm up for it, for whatever y'all want?
I'm just not going to, I'm not going to sit here and pretend to be fully up to speed on engineering ADA compliant laws, so that's what the engineer's for, and if you're trying to make it ADA, I'll be more comfortable with them saying, yeah, that plan will work.
It should be ADA, yeah. I'm okay with that.
Okay. All right. So, this will be tabled for discussion at a later date after I talk to David Howell with Bell Engineering. All right. All right, so in old business, we, the water department came up with, what is that term, Biden? Meters?
Uh, terminally meters.
Oh, thank you. Couldn't even pronounce that one. Appreciate that one. So, basically, all we need on record is what account we would like to take that out of. We didn't vote, we voted to approve that. We just need to make sure that what account...
How much was it now?
What was the total?
Seventy-seven.
Seventy-seven thousand.
Over a three-year payment plan.
So, in my opinion, and this is just my opinion, it shells mercy, but I think the occupational tax would be a good one to take out of.
Yeah.
So, it's on y'all, and I'll ask for a motion to accept, to take out of whichever account that you all would like.
I make a motion we take it out of the occupational tax.
A second.
I have a first and a second. All in favor say aye. Pose like aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Action on new business. Like I said, we do have the mayor of Centertown here with, the new elected mayor of Centertown, Mike Audress, with us. We have, I've been talking to him and some of the city officials down there, and I would like to surplus our old existing Christmas lights that we have, like up there in the upstairs here, basically, and I would like to surplus them, and after it was declared, if it gets declared surplus, I would like to see if we can donate those to the city of Centertown.
I think that's the only logical thing to do.
So, two things. Number one, it's a special call, so we can take action if it's not on the agenda. But if it's something that we have as property that we are transferring to another government agency, then we don't have to do the whole run and jump through that.
Surplus.
And it can, you know, and you're also talking about something of not significant value, nominal value anymore.
Yeah.
So, that's a mayor's call.
Okay.
Good.
All right, then that'll be fine. So, anytime that I...
You all can ratify it and tell him, "Good job."
So, anytime that, like, if I wanted to add on...
If you, anything that you want to add on a special call meeting has to be on the agenda and published prior, because you can only take action on things that a special call is on the agenda. You can discuss it, but you can't take any action.
Thank you, lawyer.
This were our normal meeting.
If it were a normal meeting...
We could have done something.
Yeah.
Got you. All right, that's why you're here.
Live and learn.
Appreciate it.
You don't have to come back anymore.
You're good. We'll take care of that within a day or two, and I'll get with Jason, Maintenance, and, well, Jonathan's here, so we'll get with you all and see what we can do for you.
We had to have her here at all special call meetings.
Who?
Keep it legal.
For my safety and yours, yes, we do.
Mike, you're part of it, right?
Okay, so...
I'm glad you're here.
I am too.
Mary Bell isn't, but thanks.
So, just for informational, I'm going to give some informational, no business on this. Gillespie Street project on the water lines has got started today, so they are going to be up and running on that. They'll hit the ground running Monday, and so basically, that'll be done before too long. So, that's about all I've got. I'm going to go around the table. Jerry, do you have anything to bring forward to go to the body?
No, I just like the way the city's beginning to look better, about everywhere.
I don't know whether I can bring this up or not.
Things can be discussed. Can't do anything. Can't take action.
I know the Bennett's are still looking for a concrete man for their sidewalk over here.
Who is?
The Bennett's.
Oh, they are?
Yes, they are. Yeah, I keep priding them every week.
Okay.
Maybe you can put them on.
Well, I did. I gave them that name and number, and Joe talked to him, but then Joe left for Las Vegas, and he's hiking the Green Canyon this weekend, so...
It's low on the sun.
Yeah, that concrete is not important.
Derek realizes she doesn't know how to deal with concrete man, so anyway, but they are working on it, and I will keep on them.
Okay.
I also have had someone approach me, and they talked to the city some years ago, and I remember this. As you turn into Oakwood Cemetery, and you go down the hill to, I think, the Second Street, that then makes the turn to the left, there's a group of family plots there, it's the Porters, and that hill is such that it keeps eroding, and it's really eroded after the rain we had this year.
You're talking right up as you go over Iron Mountain Hill?
No, not upon the hill, no.
Oh, okay.
No, this is down here.
Right.
It's underneath that hill.
Is it right before you turn onto Ever Woods, going out towards us?
Where the water and mud...
You turn down Oakwood into Oakwood Cemetery.
The first dip.
The first dip.
Okay, so, not off Iron Mountain. I thought you were talking about that.
Now, is that where we put that tile in?
Yes.
Okay, I talked to her. Basically...
Seven years ago?
Or just recently.
No, new work's been done.
We put, we put two...
Who were you talking to?
Uh, what's, who lives, Ms. Norsworthy?
Yeah.
Flora?
Flora.
I talked to her.
She was talking about on her side of the road.
Yeah, that's her side.
Not on Cemetery's side.
We're talking in the cemetery. As you turn in the cemetery, you go down the dip, I think there's two roads, and then there's a third one at the bottom of that big hill.
Do you know where Pendleton was on both of those Oakwoods? I think she's on that curve.
Okay.
Well, what?
Have you been out there recently?
No, I was just going to drive out there today.
We'll look at, Jonathan, we'll get together, and we'll look at that, and...
It's there, close to the entrance.
Okay.
And it's at the bottom of the hill there.
The city did a lot of tile work recently, and that should take care of a lot of erosion issues.
Not there it didn't.
You don't think so?
That's what she's telling me.
We'll look at it and see, and...
Before you get to any work that the city did.
Yeah.
The black concrete breaking, that, you said, is breaking?
No, no, no. The whole, they're afraid the grains are going to start coming in.
Okay.
Yeah, they're afraid that this, that it may really wash out.
All right. I'll get with them tomorrow.
And they're old, some of them are very old, and probably wasn't a good place to pick, but they're there, so...
Well, we'll definitely look and see what we can do to divert that water. Station, do you have anything to bring to the...
I'm loving the vibe of the city and the positive feedback, the work that Meredith's been doing, the Facebook page, all the history stuff that's coming up and being reposted, and people are really, I think, energized about things we're doing.
Yes.
Yes, they are. I think these lights really...
I know it.
I can agree, and I appreciate all the council and all the employees and the volunteers, even Sharon. I mean, they, they've all, everybody's been good, everybody's had a good vibe, and I want to continue to do that, so thank you all for everything that you all do as well. Coleman, do you have anything to bring forward?
I just think of all the council members that have voted back in and everything.
Absolutely. Congratulations.
Looking for a new year. Great things.
That's right. Positive mindset. Mr. Rafferty, you have anything? Terry, you got anything?
No, I'm just staring at my mother, making, wondering how mean she's going to be tonight.
Look like she's going to be pretty mean to me.
All right. Does anybody have anything that they would like to discuss, or...
Now's your time.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. So, well, first of all, I do want to tell you, the city looks fantastic, and I'm super, super proud of it, and I'm proud of the council and the mayor and everybody for doing so much. Now, here's my beef.
Love it. Bring it.
You were bringing up that one of these projects that you're doing, you want to use occupational tax money for, correct? Okay. I pay occupational tax, I pay city business licenses, I pay all my property taxes, all that kind of good stuff, right? Okay, so my beef is, if you're going to have other people come in that don't have brick-and-order places or do not have ties with the county or something like that, if they're not here, every revenue dollar that they make is going out of our city, out of our county. We're not getting occupational tax from them, you're not getting any kind of anything. They're just taking our money and leaving, and we don't see a penny of it, okay? So, I'm wondering if maybe there's some way either to require them to pay occupational tax, or if there's some kind of fee whenever they come here, they would have to pay a fee to the city each time that they set up.
Are you talking about food trucks?
Yes.
So, basically, from the information that I've received and the ordinances that was passed, the $75 kind of waived the occupational. I've talked to Terry since then. We're going to review this, and I would like to have something to bring forward at the December meeting, even if we have to stiffen up the business license, the occupational tax. So, that's something that I would like to bring forward, because we strive on our businesses that we have in the city, and we support you all, and so we'll do everything that we can to make sure that we can do what we have to do to be done.
And I'll just, I'll just remind, too, that when we last updated the occupational tax and the business licenses, at the time, we, there was no place to eat in Hartford. I mean, it was barren when it came, lunch bell rang, and we all ran across the bridge. But obviously, we've had significant growth since then, we've seen a lot of great things happen in the city, and at the time, it was like, oh, we just need to feed our workers. At the same time, I can appreciate the concern.
Most definitely. So, that's something that we're going to try to have, that's something that the December So, that's something that we're going to try to have, that's something that the December meeting, it's going to be a short meeting because that'll be our Christmas dinner as well. Pause. Oh, yes.
I've got a question, uh, when you're talking about increasing business license taxes, is that for countywide or city?
So, basically, that'll be just, that'll be outside.
Okay.
That'd be just outside because it's, it's, it's basically, uh, like the seventy-five dollars, you can get a business license and basically, that'll cover you for that day, is that right?
For, no, it's a year.
For the year, it'll, it'll, it'll basically take care of that.
You're seeing, what you're seeing now is, used to, a food truck would maybe come in once a month and set up shop from out of town. And what we're seeing now is they're coming back three, four times a week, every week. And they're not, they're, so, as she was saying, yeah.
Is as a business owner that does, you know, sell food and things like that, I mean, it doesn't like completely hurt us. I mean, we're okay and we're okay with competition. It's just, it doesn't seem fair that we pay every single time and they come in three, four times, almost open in Hartford as many days as we are and yet they're not paying anything for that.
Right, and that, that was a policy and an ordinance that was passed prior to me being here and some of the council members as well. So, Terry's going to revise that and see what we can come up with.
See, they pay every time they come to set up, you know what I'm saying? Maybe something like that.
Yep.
And that could go into the occupational tax fund or however you want to, you know, do the monies with that.
So, just get the application and the ordinance and let's see if we can have, even if we have to have a special call meeting beforehand to have a first and second, so, um, let's see if we can get something done in December. We got you.
I appreciate it, so do the other businesses around here.
But we'll, we'll do what we can to make the necessary happen, uh, and we understand, we don't, um, and like you said, everybody likes competition for the most part, but when you, when you all are have to pay the occupation more than anybody, then it's not fair to you all.
Well, and it wasn't bad when it was like once a month, but when you're talking two, three days a week, I mean, that's, that's a lot.
So, we'll, we'll definitely just look into that, um, and, and then-
They sat right in front of the library the other day. Yeah. And my folks were really sitting in front of that library, cause-
Well, let's discuss it when it's on the agenda for the next meeting.
Yep, so that'll be fine, so even if we have to have a special call meeting, we'll have a first and a second and just let me know on, on the, uh, uh, application and the ordinance and we'll see what we can come up with as a, as a council, so. All right, uh, Meredith, do you have anything to bring to the table?
I mean, I can give a general update, um, Voices of Oakwood went extremely well, uh, we had, we could not have asked for better weather. It was so beautiful, you could cry both nights. They did a wonderful job getting Oakwood ready for us, like trimmed trees and made sure everybody had a safe experience. We had over eighty people come, which is great because we only had eighty tickets, so we used a few extra people on each ride. Uh, we had some interns doing some work for us, with Kentucky Wesley College and OCTC, uh, with some videos for a walking tour to hopefully have ready for the summer, sort of walking tour and some logos and mural designs and things like that. Uh, we're working on Shop Small Saturday and some events and publications in the future. Christmas on the Square will be December tenth, we have a ton of things lined up for that. Local businesses are going to be providing like scavenger hunt and face painting, fire pits, bouncy house, the ice skating, Santa, vendors, all of that fun stuff will be here on December tenth. There'll also be a donation box for, uh, through donations that we can collect. It is the one-year anniversary of the tornado, so we'll have a donation box to help people who still need some help. Um, the tattoo shop's actually going to be the one for that, so we're excited for what's up ahead. And there's also Light Up Hartford, I'm working on getting something into the paper either this week or next week. But there's going to be prizes for residential and for businesses to decorate. So, if you know people who do a good job decorating their house, uh, call them out and tell them to sign up for the competition. Uh, we'll publish that map if everyone who signs up, so hopefully people will come to Hartford and they drive around and they get to see all the Christmas lights, not only on Main Street here with the businesses in the city, but they just spend their evening cruising around looking at those residential lights.
I also told, um, Lisa, we need to get together pretty soon for prizes giveaways and stuff, so maybe next week we can get together. What I intend-
Did you confirm a Grinch?
Oh, yeah, are you going to be a Grinch?
Yes, I'm doing it. I'm going to steal everybody's prizes, everything. I'm going to be the Grinch. I'm going to, I'm going to eat people's cotton candy and everything.
Like the whole day, eleven to seven?
I got to find, y'all find me the outfit, I will definitely get the Grinch.
Because we're having cinnamon rolls with Santa from eight to ten at Sorehead's and if the Grinch wanted to pop in, I'm going to be there.
Find me the outfit, I'm there. I will, I will still eat, I'll eat the, I'll eat the candy and-
Steal the ornament?
Throw the hot cocoa on everybody, yes, I'm there.
I'm being a nail with pipes and shoes.
Yes, most definitely the Grinch.
I'm sending Lisa a link right now.
Yep, get the Grinch, I'm there.
When are you all having yours?
We're at Centertown.
The, our gift giveaway is on the ninth and then our parade goes finalized as the third, the weekend before.
That, that, that reminds me, on December the third, I think, is that right? Parade in Beaver Down. December the third, Parade in Beaver Down, five o'clock. Um, the city maintenance and Marissa's getting a float together and I asked all the city council to be on the float with us. Um, they're getting a float together, so I would like to see if all our council members and everybody be included in that float.
December third for Beaver Down Parade?
Yes.
What time?
Five o'clock, December third at five o'clock.
We're going to have shirts, mate?
We're working on that.
Are you?
Yes. Working on it, so if you can be there. Okay, all right. Terry's hungry, we got to go. Um, I, uh, make the motion we adjourn this meeting.
You don't get to make the motion.
Do I have a motion?
I make a motion.
I'll cancel those two motions.
First, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you all.
We'll get y'all, we'll get your money.